We'll make that connection yet, but we're going to start and continue to get connected with him. We were connected up in our work session, so hopefully we can, we can get back with I've asked Counselor Arnold if he would lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Everyone, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we'd like to take a moment of silence. It's customary that we do that in our city council meetings. As we take a moment of silence this evening, we would invite you to remember our military folks that are serving around the world that protect this nation, this great nation of ours, and for their service. We'd also ask you to remember our local public defenders, our firefighters, our police officers, and keep them in your thoughts if you would. We'd also ask you to remember our city council this evening as they make decisions that they might be able to do so in the best interest of our community. We now take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Well, next, move on to our public comment period. At this time, you're welcome to come forward to the microphone. You can present any ideas or concerns that you might have to the city council. We would ask you to state your name when you come up. And also, we would ask you, please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
You there, Counselor? Bart? Bart, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Thanks.
Okay, the time is now yours for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. This evening, we have a presentation that we'd like to make. We'd like to make it to one of our residents who's lived in Riverdale City for many years, and he's also served on the planning commission. I could almost name the planning commission after him. He's been there, been there so long. David Gailey. David Gailey has served under three mayors. He was first, became on the planning commission when Mayor Howard Coleman during his administration. He also served while Bruce Burrows was in office for about 12 years. And he's also served about six years that I've been mayor. He did take a break. He took his sweet wife Betty and they went on the LDS mission to Dallas, Texas. They were gone for a period of time, but he came back. It wasn't long. He was back serving on the planning commission. He finished his final four-year term last month, and at the time that he finished that service, he was the vice chair of the planning commission. And David was always known, Mike's told me this, as always making decision recommendations that were in the best interest of the city. Quite often, they hold public hearings, and some of these public hearings get pretty heated and a lot of concern, but I think the term was Dave never caved. He always kept his cool and he always did what he felt was right in his heart for the city. So, when talking to Dave, I talked to him on the phone a few days ago and got some information from him. He told me, he says, "I love Riverdale City. I've enjoyed every minute of its service." And I just maybe mentioned a few facts about him that I think most of us aren't aware of. He served in the Army from 1957 to 1960. He then began his federal service career. He retired from Hill Air Force Base after 30 years of service. He served as an aircraft mechanic on the F-4 fighter aircraft, and he also worked in quality assurance there at the base. Dave and his wife Betty raised five children. They came to Riverdale in 1964. They lived on 700 West initially. And he said it was a dead-end road at the time when they moved there, and they've lived on Ritter Drive since 1978. Dave was an avid bowler for many years and enjoyed umpiring softball. He has always enjoyed helping other people, always willing to help others. But we sincerely appreciate Commissioner Gailey's many years of volunteer, volunteer service to the community, and we wish Dave and his family the very best in the years to come. So, Dave, I'd like to present this with you if you want to. Meet you down here. I'm going to give this to Dave, but I'd like him to go to the microphone, maybe share a few thoughts if you would.
First of all, I wished Commissioner, Counselor Stevens was here. When we served together, he was kind of, I don't know how to put this, he wasn't my enemy, but he and I had some strong feelings for one another at different times. He kept me on the straight and narrow, and I always appreciated him. When I got out of, off the trail, he'd bring me back, and I appreciate him very much, as I do all the, all the city employees. Just for your information, Mayor, about three weeks ago, I was thinking that I should come before the council and thank them all for letting me serve on these councils. And then it wasn't two or three days later that the mayor called me and told me he wanted me to be here, so I didn't have to call him back. I know all of you very well, and I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate the city of Riverdale. Mike, I come to be real close to you. Appreciate you very much for your patience. Those of you who know me well know if I think I'm right, I will argue to my death to prove it. There were some times when there was a lot of talk that needed to be done, and I did a lot of it. But I always tried in my mind to keep the people of Riverdale at the top of those things that I was thinking. I appreciated very much the concern of some of my fellows when I was in the hospital with different illnesses. When I had my heart attack and was there for a week, I had visitors from Mayor and from others, and I appreciated that. One of the reasons that I've decided to give up my chair was that I think we need some younger thinking for the next few years for Riverdale City. And I believe that the youth are ready now to serve and to do well. I would also like to say that if you young guys, if you need any advice or would like to talk about something, I'm always available. I won't make up your mind for you, but I have some things that I might help you with. Mayor, I appreciate you. I've known you for a long time. You didn't know it, but I knew you when you was out at the base. I used to see you all the time out on the flight line when I was working over in flight test. And I think one of the things that helped me on the planning commission was that I was in a situation in the base that I had to make decisions, and some of those decisions could have caused people their lives if I didn't make the right one. We worked with test pilots, and part of my job was to, after the mechanics had worked on the airplanes, was to make sure everything was right and sign off of it. And it was a strenuous job because if I made a mistake, we could have lost some pilots. And usually, there were two men in a plane, so we could have lost a couple of pilots. But I want to thank my family for supporting me all, all the years that I worked. Sometimes I, we got behind in production out there, and we were working 12-hour shifts. And we'd work from 4:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon, and then from 4:00 in the afternoon to 4:00 in the morning again. And this lasted for about three months. And it was interesting. We came in one morning to start the work, and being the comedian that I am, I was sitting on the west side of, the east side of the table, and I looked out the window to the west side, and I said, "Look at that, the sun's coming up early." And everyone in the room turned and looked that way to see if the sun was coming up. I did it to be funny, and it was. But I really appreciate all of you being here. And like I say, Counselor Stevens, it was fun wrestling with you, and I appreciate your help in keeping me straight and doing the best things for the city. And I really appreciate all of you, from the mayor to my favorite secretary over here. And I just can't tell you well enough what my career with the city has done for me, and I hope I've done something for the citizens of Riverdale. Thank you very much.
Counsel, do you have any thoughts?
I've known Dave a long time. I just really wanted to tell you how much I appreciate all that you did for the city. It was a pleasure serving with you on the planning commission when I did.
Thank you very much, David. We appreciate you and all you've done for, for Riverdale City. We'll next move on to our consent items. First is the consideration review of our meeting minutes from December 18th, 2018, both the city council work session and the regular session, and on January 15th, 2019, both the city council work session and the regular city council meeting that evening. Do you have any changes or corrections? Second item, consent item, consideration of planning commission appointment to serve four-year term from February 2019 to January 2023. The first is Steve Hilton. Steve has already served two terms on the planning commission, as I understand. He started, this will be his third four-year term. So, he's trying to, trying to catch David. Steve is very faithful. He's very good at what he does, and we appreciate your willingness to serve, to serve, Steve. You're just really good at what you do. Steve's an executive with America First. He lives down in River Glen, a fine man. We've got also new to the planning commission. Steve, would you stand? I should ask you to do that. I'm sorry, just so that people can, might know who you are. Thank you. And Wanda, Wanda and I, we've asked her to serve on the planning commission. She's a longtime resident of Riverdale. She, I believe, retired from the IRS, and after many years of service, I've known her and other for many years, and I know she's pretty smart. I know she's got a, she's, I'm trying to think of the right word without. She's got a lot of energy, let's just put it that way. She does have much energy, but I'd like to present those two names for consideration tonight. We would need a motion on the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Bart. Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, and we look forward to having you two on, serving. Mike, I'm sure is in touch with both of you, and you know when, when the next meeting Move on next to our action items. Our first action item tonight is consideration of resolution 2019-03, amending the online public treasures investment fund account management platform. Is Cody here? Did he come to this meeting? Don't seem. Roger, do you want to just maybe mention what that is?
Mayor, Counsel, thank you. This is an item on your agenda for your action. The staff recommends that our business administrator, which is Cody Carden, be added to the list of authorized users who have access to and can transact business on the public treasure investment fund, and we need your approval to add him to do so.
Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns with this? We need a motion on this resolution, then, Mr. Arnold.
Move to approve resolution 2019-03 as stated within the packet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Manning, will you poll the council on the resolution, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
It's unanimous in favor. Thank you. Move on to action item two. This is consideration of the final site plan approval for the Quick Quack Car Wash. This is located approximately 697 West Riverdale Road. This is being requested by Quick Quack Utah 3 LLC. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. QQ Utah 3 LLC is represented tonight by Joseph Ernest, who's sitting in the back. So, if you have questions of him, he's in the back to answer what you may have for him. As you noted, this is a final site plan review for a car wash site in ancillary facilities on a parcel, it's cross-owned, regional commercial C3 and light manufacturing M1. The property owner currently is River Corner LLC, and it's located approximately adjacent to a tire dealership, which is Lush Swap Tires, and then the Music Village or the Crabtree Building on that location, that pad. It came before the planning commission on November 13th, 2018, wherein the planning commission recommended city council approval subject to resolving outstanding staff concerns. Those issues and concerns have been resolved by the applicant and the engineering group that works for the applicant. The, let's see, the general plan usage for the property is planned commercial high in this use, does comply with that use on that property. And our, our city attorney has, has only asked that we make sure all outstanding previous staff concerns have been resolved. And as you look at the reports in your packet, you see evidence of that, and we also noted as such in the work session that those items have been resolved. The only item of note that I will put on the record per the public works director is he just says that all of the items listed will take place as the project moves forward. I'd recommend approval. His three items are as follows. Under stormwater, that a long-term operation and maintenance plan be recorded with plat, a notice of intent for stormwater permit will need to be filed with the state of Utah, and the owner needs to record with the plat, provided responsibility letter that has been provided in your packet. All those items have been shared with, with Mr. Ernest. He's aware of those, but you're, you're welcome to ask any other questions you may have of him relative to that. Following that, there's supportive comments from the city administrator, the police chief and the fire chief for this project. There are no concerns. And then the city engineer is supportive of what has been provided in your packet and all the representations of the applicant for that, as well as the engineer's cost estimate, which will establish the, the warranty performance for the site. Other than that, looks like staff supports the, the project and has fulfilled what the planning commission has asked for, and I defer to the city council and mayor for further discussion.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Like one of you had something on cross, on access? That you?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that you have cross-access with the tire shop. My question is, how are you going to keep people from coming in that one way? Is it going to be signage or?
Yeah, come on up here real quick, Joel.
Just like we do on Ritter Drive.
Good to be with you. Signage is the answer for that one, Counselor?
Okay. Are you expecting a lot of traffic that might be using that access, or will that create a problem?
The tire shop? No, we're not.
I mean, for your, for your business exiting the car wash?
Are we expecting a lot exiting to the tire shop? No, we're not.
Okay, and most of your green space is going to be along 700, right?
Correct.
I appreciate the fact that it's, it's going to look really good.
Yeah, it's a pretty robust landscaping plan.
And amongst, even amongst other Quick Quacks, this site will look even better. This is going to be one of our unique sites. We're actually really excited to build it. There's two towers on this Quick Quack Car Wash, which is unique.
And it's going to look like the one, sort of like the one in Roy, right?
But better.
Okay.
A Riverdale better version.
That's good.
That's on the record. Wow.
Quick Quack too.
Like our Roy site, of course.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Arnold?
And move to approve the final site plan for approval for Quick Quack Car Wash as stated within the packet.
Second.
Got a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Said delayed action from Indianapolis. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any opposed?
Well, the mute button.
Could be. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ernest. I have been using the one in Leighton, and yeah, I have a, I like what you do, so. That's good, kind of put in a, I guess that's a plug, so. Yeah, we look forward to having you come and hope you're successful here in our cities, so. There's about 50,000 cars a day go down Riverdale Road at the last UDOT traffic count, so.
We're going to wash them.
See if you can get some of them off, yeah. Get one of those guys out and sign on his back and run them in.
Mayor, could we be excused?
Sure. Yeah, and actually, the meeting's over other than, pretty close, but you're welcome to go anytime, and I should have mentioned that earlier, so apologize for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you, Gailey family, and appreciate your service, David. Yeah, you deserve it.
Yeah, I need to call you a little, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, move on to discretionary items. Are there any discretionary items for this meeting? Really quiet. You guys.
Oh, wait, I have one since you're waiting for someone to talk. Could we get somebody to encourage Jackie to get a new laptop?
Is it noisy?
It's, it's out of date. She needs a high-performing computer for her job duties, and she says that she's been dragging that one along. She needs some encouragement to do that. Let's get one ordered.
He's, he's reading off a note that she gave him. Oh, my gosh.
We've got that in the queue.
All right. It's behind our Chromebooks, right?
Top that. I'll mention one thing. With that sales tax issue we talked about, but I'll just mention this briefly, and we'll talk about it further in another meeting, but about a week ago, Roger and I went to a, a meeting on the future of solid waste and garbage in Weber County, and, and it was, I told you once about the company that wanted to build a plant and do all the recycling material. They would use the fiber and the plastic to make a fuel, a burn like coal. There's another company, this company's in Germany, I think it's called Herhoff, and they've got, I think, about 30 of these plants in, in Germany and other countries. There are none right now in the United States, but there's an effort being made to, to come to the United States, but they come in, they build the plant. This company builds a plant, $30 to $43 million, something like that. They'll build the plant. All we do is, from our cities, we have to have our haulers haul it and dump it at their doorstep or wherever they dump it. And goes into that plant, and all the, all the recycling, instead of the blue cans, all goes in, let's say, the black can. Everything goes in together, this, this plant. It's odor-free. They've got a thing, they dry all the, all the waste first. They've got some big, they almost look like vaults for a coffin only, they're really big, but they dry all the material. Then they sort out, they sort out all the fiber, all the plastics. It sorts the plastics by color, and it takes glass. Glass actually gets broken up, and you see it going down a conveyor belt, and it, it sorts the glass and does everything, really, and it makes the fuel, makes the fuel out of the fiber and the plastics. This fuels like pellets, and it burns like coal and replace the coal, and it, it doesn't have any, well, there's no, no pollution that comes from a light coal. It's very clean burning. It would be used like a cement plant up in Croydon. They make the, they make the fuel, sorts all the metals out, all the aluminum, everything's sorted and separated. There's no tipping fees like there is at the transfer unit. That's right now, they're trying to find out more about it, and, but they've been in operation for quite a few years over in Europe. Anyway, and then about, what ends up, about 10% of what goes in goes to the landfill, which is really a, a good thing. It's really, sounds good, almost too good to be true, but we saw pictures, videos of the plants, you know, some of these other miracle things we've had presentations from. They say they check with them. They want to visit their plant. Well, we don't have a plant yet, but these are all, these are all working. They're all in operation. St. George has been over. We talked last night in our WACOG meeting at, in our WACOG meeting and encouraging the county to, to move forward on this and try to get as much information as possible because... Because once this gets started, and they do, they do a plant per populated area, like we'd have one here in Weber County. We don't have to haul it to Salt Lake or Promontory or somewhere like that. It's all, they could put a plant in right out on some property next to the transfer station. So, just kind of leave that with you. There is a lot of promise to it. They did say last night, St. George has sent a group, or some people over there and looked at it. So, the county, and we could probably get a lot more information from St. George and maybe not have to send any, a couple folks over there to talk to the, you'd want to talk to the mayors and the people that run the city and find out what, you know, are they paying tipping fees now, and are there any fees or costs and things? But it really sounded quite promising, sounded like a good thing because they expect our population to double along the Wasatch Front in the next not-too-many years. It'll be up to 6 million people in Utah instead of 3 million. So, it's going to be a whole lot of garbage. Any other discretion or anything else you want to add? Have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. I have our RDA meeting here next in just a couple minutes.